Okay, we want to call to order the June 4th Seabrook City Council meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible)
Okay, we're gonna, we got a number of presentations tonight for some very important people. So, we're going to move the presentations before public comments. So, 2.1, to present the Mayor's Certificate of Appreciation to thank Rosebud Keradak for her 39 years of service to the city of Seabrook. Come on up. Yeah, you can stay, why don't you stand next to me? Okay. It's with my heartfelt gratitude to Rosebud for your exceptional services and unwavering dedication over the past 39 years to the City of Seabrook's Planning and Zoning Commission. Your commitment to our community has been nothing short of extraordinary. Your insight, expertise, and tireless efforts have played a pivotal role in shaping the growth and development of Seabrook. Your long-lasting service is a testament to your passion and devotion to improving our city for current and future generations. Thank you, Rosebud, for your remarkable contributions and the positive impact you have made. Your legacy will be remembered and cherished by all who have had the privilege to work with you and by the many residents whose lives have been enriched by your service. I just want to say something. Back in 2004, when I, just after I served on the open, or on the Master Plan Committee, Rosebud approached me and she got me involved in, in the city. And, and I'm not sure whether to thank her or whether, but, but it, but it's heartfelt that Rosebud was the one that started me on this path. So, thank you. Okay, and we have another very important person with us today, Michelle Glazer. Please come up, Michelle. I've known Michelle for many years. Michelle served, has served the city for over 30 years. Actually, she started in 1983 on Public Works, I think.
No, Exiling Department.
Oh, Building Department. And, and she was our City Secretary here for 17 years. And, and recently, she has served eight years on our Board of Adjustment. So, she's been with the city, you know, for ages and we love her. I mean, she has done a tremendous job. I first met her when she was serving as City Secretary as an employee of the city. Michelle's willingness, after retirement, and as a dedicated resident, to come back and serve the great city is such an honorable act in giving back to the community. Her knowledge and dedication over the past eight years on the Seabrook, Seabrook's Board of Adjustment has added a tremendous wealth of knowledge to the very important role. Michelle had the privilege of serving, I don't know if it's a privilege or not, but she, she served six mayors.
Wow, it was.
Okay. And, and your love for our community has been so special and it is with my honor to thank you for your service. Your past experience and expertise undoubtedly added to the integrity of the process. Thank you, Michelle, for your time, contributions to the city. You will always serve as a model for others to give back. Thank you very much.
And it breaks my heart to leave it because of health concerns, I have to move closer to my daughter. But those of you who have lived in Seabrook appreciate what you have because it's a wonderful thing here. And you make it a wonderful thing. One, two, three. Thank you so much. You are all doing great jobs.
We have another, another special, special award tonight, a presentation of a life-saving award to Officer Michael Dyer and Officer Matthew Sterling for the life-saving efforts they provided on April 8th, 2024. Chief?
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Many of you see our officers every day, hopefully that are on some good occasions. I know a lot of times that the police are the ones that are called when things go bad. That's usually the first interaction citizens have with their law enforcement. Well, it's no different in Seabrook, except Officer Dyer and Officer Sterling in the back of the room, who's always hiding. They are two of Seabrook's finest. And on April 8th, they were dispatched to a call about a young child, a two-year-old, that wasn't breathing. Well, that two-year-old had been born prematurely and had lived in the NICU for about a year before she was released to go home. When she went home, she went home on a ventilator and that's what malfunctioned the day that Officer Dyer and Officer Sterling responded. They got there, they began CPR, life-saving efforts on that child, were able to keep the child sustained until EMS got there. The child was transported to the hospital where she was able to stay alive. Her story is, it's still not finished, but Officer Sterling and Officer Dyer, they did a phenomenal job that day, so we want to commend them for their efforts. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Very good job. Appreciate it. We're proud of you. Okay, so, we have a little, little celebration that everybody can join us. We're gonna break for about 15, 20 minutes. There's cake and, and stuff in the back and, and wish them farewell and, and we'll be back in, at 6:30. Thank you.
I'm gonna be a problem for you.
Especially because on software, you're using it, it's really great.
Yeah, maybe.
I've got it up right now and see if it's kind of speaking up. If I miss, if it's not loaded, then I just write it down.
Just actually, I wanted to do it in this room and sitting up here because I was trying to practice in the audience. And I couldn't keep up. Everyone's around here.
I think also because like when you're down and I hear somebody go, right? You have to cover this thought somewhat.
So, I kind of know their voices, like if I'm sitting over there, I can hear them.
Have you started?
Yes.
Oh, no, it's, it's in Seabrook. Yeah.
Crazy.
Everybody back? We'll continue on, it's 6:27. 2.4, a presentation of a post-event report by the Bay Area Houston Ballet. Not after, until after. Jill, come on up. Thank you.
Hi, thank you Mayor and members of council. I'm very excited we are tonight to do our post-report for our 48th season. And I have a little presentation here. Okay, and here we go. Thank you so much. As I just said, we just finished our 48th season. How do I get it? Okay, I'm just gonna point it to you. As you all know, I hope my goal tonight, I want to tell you how exciting our ballet is, how gracious the arts are going in our area, but also tell you some things that you probably don't know about the ballet. So I'm excited to be here. As you know, our mission is to inspire cultural appreciation through the performing arts. But you probably don't know that we are so committed to getting arts into all aspects of our community, to giving awareness. We do a lot with our schools. We really try to do educational programming, collaborative projects with different aspects all over the community, and interactive experiences. So as I just said, we finished our 48th season, and this was our cover that you graciously funded. Okay. I don't know why that's in a different font up there. Okay, interesting, but that's okay. It's supposed to say "celebrate 48," okay? We do productions throughout the entire year. I'm like, oh, this is interesting, all right. Our season does take place over the course of the entire year, so that's exciting. We did four productions this past year: Cinderella, of course, The Nutcracker, The Best of Babbitt, and La Vie a Dare. So in that aspect is 26 full-stage productions. We did 32 community appearances all over the place, and we had an audience of over 12,000. Of course, numbers speak volumes. I wanted you to take a little pie graph look at our income, where our income comes from. We are heavily, of course, in grants, fundraising, individual donors. Our production, if you take a look, is only 32.5% of our income. So we do depend on lots of outside sources to make it all work. And then our expenses, we try to keep this in balance as well. If you know a lot about nonprofits and art entities, you don't want your staff to be larger than your production and all of those aspects, and we are right in line with that. We are Guide Star, platinum level in Guide Star, and all of this is accumulated into that decision-making. Okay? So this year, Cinderella, we did in October, we did four shows, and we sold 1,648 tickets to this. I'm gonna go through a lot of numbers, I'm a number person. The Nutcracker, we presented 18 shows this past year. Six of these shows, a lot of people don't know, are for students to attend the theater. And we had 2,982 students attend. Of that, 1,760 of these were for Title I schools. We bring bus students to the theater to get to see the full-stage production. We do an intermission where the characters come out and they speak to them on how point shoes are made, where tutus come from, all of the aspects, and it's really a very exciting thing. Bay Elementary, one of yours, Seabrook Schools, is part of this endeavor that we do. Not only the six shows, we did 12 public shows, which had an audience of 5,688, with a total of 8,670. In the spring, we produced La Vie a Dare, which was quite interesting. We got to be up and close with Cheetah, that's the snake. I had to do an interview with Cheetah around my neck, it's probably the hardest thing I've ever had to get through, but I did it, and it was exciting. This spring show was fabulous, and we sold over 1,000 tickets to that. Okay? Not only do our productions, as I said, we did 32 public appearances. Some of those are, we go into the schools, and we present small vignettes, and we talk to them about what ballet does, how do you train to be a ballerina, all of the aspects of that. And we go all over the place, down in Galveston, golf tournaments, Lakewood Yacht Club, we did the women's luncheon there. And we love doing free ballet lessons in the parks to anybody who likes to come. So that's always exciting. And here's just a few more of those. I love the bottom picture, you'll see that is a full student audience seeing The Nutcracker that we talked about a second ago. And that is Pitbull up there in the corner. But who's better than Pitbull than the Seabrook City Council? No, I love trying to catch them in photos when the ballerinas are around, so that's exciting. Advertising, a big part of our hot funding is to support advertising, and we really do a really good job of that. We do five billboards a year. One, when you run a billboard, it goes for an entire month. And we do a standing billboard on Highway 3, and then five digital billboards all around town. One of the ones down across the bridge is one of the digital ones that we use five times a year. And then Bayer Magazine, of course, we do a half-page for each production there. And social media is huge. We try to do a post each day. We have well over 1,700 followers on there, and lots of generated, it grows every year. Love getting out our information, and to, of course, thank Seabrook for their assistance, as well as you can see in the next slide. That's three little posts about Seabrook. Okay? And now, the nitty-gritty, I know you want to know, what is our plan? How do we know? How many heads and beds do we have? And we're really proud of this. We develop this, and we tweak it each year, try to make it bigger and better. If you go to our website, when you're going to look for tickets, or you're ordering your tickets, there's a section that says "plan your stay." And if you click that on, it takes you directly to a section with Seabrook where you have the hotels. And you click that on, it'll take you directly, the link goes directly to the hotel where you can get a room. Now, at the end, of course, can you go back once, honey? I'm sorry. Sorry, Gail. At the end of the season, of course, it's very difficult to know how many of those. I can see how many click in, but it's hard to see how many rooms we actually do get. So we do a survey, that's next, Gail, yes. This survey is given to every patron that comes through the door. And of course, a lot of this is needed for other grants as well, ethnicity, gender, age. And at the bottom, if you travel more than 50 miles, and if you did, did you stay in a hotel? So this is how we try to capture the information from our patrons. And if you click "next," this is the outcome. It's, my goal is to try to get more than 37% of these surveys back. We even started doing, you can get $5 off season tickets if you fill out your survey, and different aspects of that. But through this, we do capture a good bit of information about our clientele that comes in. And we did in the last season, at the bottom there, you can see those who admitted of, that they did stay in a Seabrook hotel. So that was exciting. If you go through, we get tons and tons of wonderful comments. I can't say enough about, if you've never been to the ballet, shame on you. Rob, I see you there a lot, I really appreciate it. Susan drags him. The quality of the arts that you have here in this area, we are really, really proud of it. We have an amazing, world-renowned artistic staff, and they train our dancers, and we are just very proud of the quality if, and you can keep kind of going through these, Gail. The quality that you get, it truly is what you could get inside the loop. So we love making this perform here. We also love the fact that this gentleman right here is, was one of our professional dancers last year. He now dances for the Dutch Ballet, he's over in Amsterdam. We love training our dancers and sending them off. We have one at London Ballet, the Royal Ballet now, New York City Ballet, and then one of our precious little girls, she not even, she was not, was gonna be a senior. She was seen by Boston Ballet, and she was given a contract, so she's gone. But that's good, that's what we like. This particular dancer is with New York right now, New York City Ballet. So you can go through those. I just wanted to show you some reviews of our dancers, and the quality that you get from, that's the one upside down there, she's the one going to Boston. So, exciting. But I, look at that, there we go again, I promise you, this is not a conspiracy. I don't know where the language is coming from on that, or the font. We really want to thank the city of Seabrook for their ongoing support of the arts. I promise that's what that says. We really, truly appreciate you. And the last slide, sorry, Gail, there was one more, I'm sorry. Just to tell you that things are getting bigger and better. We're ready for our 49th season, season tickets have gone on sale. We are starting this season with a musical, Beauty and the Beast, and then The Nutcracker, and then The Best of Babbitt again, and rolling through. Lynette Mason-Gregg was the founder of our ballet, and when she passed away, the board came to me to take this on. But her idealism of what she wanted for the arts, we stick with that, we're not gonna waver for that. We try to produce triple-threat dancers. Our staff is very high in classical ballet, but we get, as you saw on the slides, I wanted you to see, there's a lot of contemporary there, and we also do a musical. We make them sing and dance. There are not that many professional ballerinas in the world, but lots of our company dancers move on and are in Broadway. A lot of Broadway actors, a lot of Broadway choreographers and different things like that. So we make them do a musical every other year, and this is that year, and you'll love it, it's gonna be fabulous. We did an American in Paris two years ago, and it was about the best thing we've ever done, it was really cool. But I just want to tell you, season tickets are on sale, be sure to get those. But we thank Seabrook so very much. I'm very excited, and I'm happy for you, the bridge is beautiful, it works so well, your city is going nowhere but up. And we just, we appreciate you, and we hope that we make you proud with the artistic ability of what we're bringing and hopefully driving people to your area. So thank you, any questions?
Appreciate it, Jill, thank you very much, any questions?
And I'm sorry for that font, I promise.
It's for our Greeks, it's for our Greek-speaking residents. Okay, moving up, back. Okay, we're gonna go back to public comments and announcements. At this time, would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker. Shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Teri Atkins.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here to speak about 4.4, I believe it is. We are asking for the city of Seabrook to help us fund the blue tourist signs that will go on 146. We really think this will do a lot to drive some business to the hotel. And I know you might think, well, why don't we just pay for it ourselves? Well, the past few years have been very taxing on the hotels. We've had so many more expenses, rising costs of labor, rising costs of utilities. We really just don't have a marketing budget at all, we can't, we just don't have the money to spend all that. And I'm sure if other hoteliers were here, they would tell you the same thing. But as I was telling Mike earlier, we, on a weekend, if it's nice outside, we could have 30 to 40 people just stop into the hotel. So without these signs on 146, they wouldn't even know we were down there. So that's really all I have to say, thank you.
Teri, can we get your address?
My address? For the hotel? My personal address, sorry. 2120 NASA Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Jennifer Finley.
All right, Jennifer Finley, 318 Lakeshore Drive, El Lago, Texas. I'm here before the city of Seabrook City Council to communicate finalization of a $10,000 Rotary Club of Seabrook grant awarded to the Seabrook and Lakeview Police Departments located in Rotary District 5890 to fund equipment for the use in advanced law enforcement rapid response training, or the Alert program. This grant provides the agency's simulation equipment to develop additional expertise to effectively respond to active shooter events, both within the community and at our local CCISD school campuses. Alert training is now mandatory every two years for all law enforcement. However, state-loaned equipment is in high demand, and loaned timeframes are limited. By having this equipment in-house, it will allow our Seabrook and Lakeview Police Departments to provide more regular training and more variety of simulations. The Rotaryians of Seabrook, El Lago, and Taylor Lake Villages cite Seabrook's Chief Nelson, Lieutenant's Brian Brand, and Robert Gonzalez, along with Lakeview's Chief Nun's leadership, informing this grant with the intent to protect their officers that put service before self, one of Rotary's key tenants, and thank these departments for protecting our citizens. The Rotary Club of Seabrook also wants to thank its own key leader members within the city of Seabrook, Gail Cook, Seabrook City Manager, for bringing this opportunity to our attention, facilitating cross-agency conversations, and supporting the communication of the Alert program on the city of Seabrook website, which will allow us to complete the grant requirements. In addition to the original simulation equipment, I am also working with your city manager, Gail Cook, and several of the city of Seabrook police leaders to include an additional ask for rifle conversion kits in this grant before we close it out. This will allow us to utilize your deconditioning rifles as simulation equipment as well. And finally, I will be working with the Seabrook and Lakeview PD and CCISD leadership teams to understand future simulation dates where the Rotary Club of Seabrook can be of assistance. We look forward to continuing this great partnership in support of our first responder community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, appreciate that. 2.0, consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of the May 21st, 2024 city council meeting. 3.2, approve the resolution 2024-12 supporting the no-wake zone in the Clear Lake area for the Texas Outlaw Challenge. Resolution of the city council of city Seabrook, supporting a no-wake zone in and around the Seabrook Clear Lake area on June 21st, 2024 during the Texas Outlaw Challenge.
Make a motion to approve 3.0 as written?
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 4.0, the bid awards. 4.1, consider and take all appropriate action on a bid award of RFP 2024-04 for HVAC maintenance to Honeywell, and approve an agreement with Honeywell for a term of three years in the amount of $231,728.37, with two optional year extensions, and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is a bid award for RFP 2024-04 for HVAC maintenance. This is a comprehensive plan, something we've not had in years past, other than here at City Hall. The comprehensive plan will cover public works, the new wastewater treatment facility, this building, City Hall, the community house, and the fire station comprehensively. And I wanted to clean up some verbiage and general information. This, while this is a three-year term with two optional 12-month periods, both parties agree that $231,728.37 is the combined cost for the first two years. So, any questions beyond that? We had 13 pull the RFP through public purchase, and at the pre-bid, we had eight participants. Honeywell is the service provider for the past five years, and in my opinion, has done a good job at maintaining the facilities. Not all of these, in fact, this agreement, we're adding the wastewater treatment plant to this list.
So that's included?
Yes, sir.
They were the ones on the fire station?
They were not a comprehensive service provider. There were several different vendors that worked on various items at the fire station. They did not install any of the components at the fire station.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Does this amount include an evaluation done by Honeywell to the conditions of the current systems and the buildings that they're going to cover?
Yes, they've reviewed all the components of each building. They've been provided every component within each of those buildings, and they've been to each of these facilities to inspect them and are knowledgeable of the components at each facility.
So with a further question, are they evaluating the efficiency? My understanding is that some of the buildings that we have are not really running at their top efficiency because of past contractor eras, possibly engineering?
My understanding is if it's within the component's abilities, and they're able to get them more efficient, then that's something that we could ask from them. But to increase efficiency, I'm not sure that's something that would be included with the comprehensive plan. And Adina's here, if you would like to ask her yourself from Honeywell. But our understanding of this comprehensive plan is that they will maintain the components of each facility as a replacement. Sure? Can you come up?
Good evening, Adina.
Adina Walker, I am the account executive for Seabrook from Honeywell. And to answer your question, with a comprehensive contract, if there was a component that needed to be replaced or upgraded to be more efficient, then we would provide Kevin and his team that information with the pricing and if there was a, an additional pricing in order to remove and replace that with a more efficient part. So if you're saying that the current, what I'm hearing you say is that currently there are areas that you feel, that you feel are not running efficiently, and in order for those to run more efficiently, if that's the case, when our technicians come out?
But that hasn't been done, right? We haven't done an evaluation of the efficiency of the equipment that's already there. Is that my understanding?
No, sir. Everything is, we've been servicing the account for the past five years, and our team is very in tune with what's going on, and Kevin's team. So, they've, I mean, I came to the job site meeting and walked the job site with the technician to evaluate all the buildings because there was a change. We've added the, the new Public Works Building, and we've gone from a, or I'm sorry, the water, the water building, and we went from a lesser service agreement to a comprehensive, which means it's all included. And if there's items that need to be done further, then all of those things are addressed. But right now, according for efficiency, everything is running as, as necessary. But if you feel like there's an item that's not, I mean, we can definitely take a look at it, but with, I'm not the technician, but my technician reports back, and Kevin and his team get reports every time an inspection is done.
So imagine if a component is outdated and not
And not functioning properly.
And the newer item is more efficient.
Right, right.
Then that's something you would replace?
Correct. It's, it's going to be taken, they're gonna come to me, they're gonna tell me that the part needs to be upgraded, and then we look at it, but as a comprehensive, it's included.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Adina.
Staff recommendation is to agree the initial three-year term.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve item 5.2.
Second.
All in favor? No, I missed, I skipped five. Yeah?
That was four point one.
Four point one. We gotta redo it.
Correction, move to approve item 4.1, a bid award for RFP 2024-04 HVAC maintenance with Honeywell.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a vote for that.
Unanimous. New business, 5.1. Thank you. Consider and take all appropriate action on an interlocal agreement for sharing computer-aided dispatch data with Tech dot at no cost to the City of Seabrook. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agreement is, was provided to us through the consortium, and it's just a, an agreement to share data, real-time data or near-real-time data from our computer-aided dispatch system with Tech dot so that it can make their responses to traffic problems more efficient. But we have to agree to give them that data or give them access to it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 5.1.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Stay up there. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of proposal and client services agreement with Utility Associates Incorporated for police body worn, in-car, and jail camera equipment, and support for $350,000 over a five-year agreement term, with a $140,000 initial one-time fee in the first year from the Crime District Fund, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a bit of background, in 2019, we started a contract with the Axon system for our body worn and in-car cameras. That was at a cost, a five-year program for $389,000. Axon has recently, since we've experimented or evaluated utilities, equipment to replace it, because we were getting to the end of their contract with Axon. They agreed to let us out of that contract with a projected date of August 1st, with a credit to our account, and this kind of gets a little convoluted, but Axon also makes Taser. So that credit to our account would be used to, for Taser parts, Taser cartridges. It wouldn't be money lost, we would spend that money anyway over time. The utility contract would also be a five-year contract. It'd be for about 10% less than the Axon contract was five years ago. But in that, they will give us things that we don't currently have with Axon, and I'm gonna run through those really quick. The, the camera is inside the uniform. It's got a little grommet. You may have seen some agencies with that little, looks like an eye on their chest. So the, the camera is inside their shirt in a pocket. It can't be knocked off. Just in the short time I've been here, we've already lost one of the Axon cameras that was knocked off during a foot chase. That couldn't happen. Real-time viewing of the, of the data from the camera. So I would be able to log on from my desk and look at anybody's body camera that was on at the time. So if they're out on a traffic stop and it's recording, any of the command staff in the PD can view it in real-time. So we can see what's going on with the officers, and that's with all the officers at any time. And they can see one another, too. If they pull that out of their, out of their shirt, they can plot each other on the map. So if they've got a perimeter around a wooded area, they take their camera out and they can see where all the other officers are. So they know where their partners in the field are. It immediately uploads to the cloud. So you know, you see our cars parked out there idling. That's because they're downloading camera footage. That would be a thing of the past, because as soon as they shut it off on a traffic stop from a call for service, wherever they're at, as soon as they stop the recording, it's LTE, it uploads to the cloud, and they're done. So they don't have to come back to the station to download. They can use the phone, they can take it out and take pictures at a crime scene. Those photographs get uploaded to the cloud, and they're automatically our evidence. We don't have to send someone else out with a camera to take pictures that then have to be stored on a device that we have to purchase as a city. They're already stored on the cloud. There's real-time GPS monitoring, which we don't currently have, or it's unreliable. They say they have it, but it doesn't work. This, we would be able to see where they're at at all times. The automatic recording, there are triggers. If they pull their holster, or pull their weapon out of their holster, it automatically starts their camera recording. If they go over a certain speed, it automatically starts their camera's recording. If they pull their Taser, it automatically starts their camera recording. There's a lot of triggers so that they don't have to think about, oh, I gotta turn my camera on, I gotta do all this stuff, you know, tapping my uniform. They just do police work. And there's an officer down notification feature. So if the, you're supposed to be vertical, if you're horizontal for more than five seconds, then you can change that time. But if you're horizontal for more than five seconds, it alerts everybody that's on duty and sends an alert to dispatch, too. So if they know, hey, there's an officer down, we've got a real-time GPS, they can turn the camera on to see if they can see what's going on. So there's a lot of features that come with this program or this product that we can't get with the product we have now, and it's 10% less for the next five years.
Cool. That's great. Any questions, Council?
I make a motion to approve 5.2 as written.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Good job, Chief. Just don't fall asleep, twenty officers are gonna show up.
That's what I was thinking.
5.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of funding signage for the hotels and motels through the Hotel Occupancy Act funds for marketing hotel and motel uses on, on or near State Highway 146 through the Texas Department of Transportation logo sign program with Lone Star logos, under lodging designation in the amount not to exceed $33,600 in the first year as an eligible expenditure to pay for advertising that attract visitors. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to discuss?
To what?
To discuss? So to approve, sorry.
Second. Okay, discussion.
So, just a quick update. Me and Gail have spoken to a lot of the hotels. We were hoping a lot of the hotels would be here tonight. As you heard, just, there was just one that came out. But we do have documentation from a lot of the hoteliers that are for this. We actually had a, I'm sorry?
Video meeting?
A video meeting, sorry. And we had, what, four or five hotels?
Five.
Five. So, and they were obviously for this, and they brought up other things as well, so it kind of turned out to a, a longer meeting than we anticipated. But you heard one of the hotels, and she's saying the same thing, they just don't have the marketing and funding to be able to support something like this on their own. And this is typically what hotel occupancy is taxed for. Now, I know we may have a little surplus this year that we might be able to take from, but moving forward, and we could talk about this in the budget time, we might be able to make some additional changes, I don't want to kind of discuss it right now, that we could take from to actually help support this, and actually in the long run would save us a little bit more money down the road as well. So, and I've talked to Amanda about it, and she knows where we're at on this, but just for public comment, we talk about it during our budget stuff. So I would like to make a recommendation that we go ahead and approve it for the first year, and I think moving forward, we'll have the funding moving forward for this, to be able to support it, so.
Anyone else?
So if they change badges, management, ownership, how is the sign then changed? Or, I mean, how is it going to look if, in the future, are there gonna be name tags where they can come and go? I don't, I don't quite understand that.
I think Gil said, mentioned it last time. I think we did get a quote for that, and I think that's something that the hotel should pay for. If the flag is changed, it's not a huge amount. I don't remember how much it was.
Yeah, I pulled up the agenda briefing, so the actual logo panel is pretty nominal. It's 550 for the actual panel on the blue sign.
So it's not really a badge, it's more of a name?
They take their logo, they take their logo and put it on the signage. Let's see if I can pull up the picture.
You can, you can see it says Holiday Inn, or it says? Right.
Yeah, and a lot of them have their badge, which, which
Which is the logo. Which is the logo.
Which is their logo.
Yeah.
But the logo's different than, could be different than the name.
I apologize, we didn't reconnect.
I just wanted to make sure that when, if we're doing this, that we're able to change the name when we need to. That's, that's the point I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
And that whoever's gonna get the hotel in the future would actually pay for
$550, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does the amount that is on here, does that include the hotel up by the Shell Station?
This would include all of the hotels and motels, yes.
Okay. And in reference to what you said, Mike, you know, I defer to you, you're the expert. My knowledge of hotels is as a guest. But is there any kind of measurement that we're gonna be looking for after the first year as to, is it working or is it not, or?
Absolutely, we can. We can ask it. Now, when I worked in Webster, we would track it. So, hey, when you're checking in, if you're a walk-in, hey, where did you hear us from? Oh, I saw your highway sign. So then we'd make note on that reservation that we would have a rate code that you would put it in, a walk-in, saw the sign, boom. So that way we could track it, just like ballet and all these other groups. Again, it's all measured by the hotelier and the general manager that's there, or the ownership, to how they're gonna track it. So like at my hotel, we try to track as, everything as much as possible.
So in your conversations with the hotels, they agreed to that?
Well, we didn't go that far, so we didn't talk. But I'm sure that's something we could definitely get in their marketing and make sure that they code it, just like everything else.
Okay. Rob?
I really want to support this. I am surprised, and maybe it's just different in the hotel industry, if the city's talking about giving the hotels $30,000 annually in free advertising, that we only had one even make time to show up. Does that indicate that they don't see any value in it? To me, it does, and if they don't see any value in it, why should we? The, the second thing is, we know we're, we have budget issues going into the new year without clarity on hot tax, without knowing what our hot tax revenue is for this year, and everything else would be, be better off deferring this until we can actually really see. I want, I want to support it. I'm asking those questions and asking for
Well, if I could just comment, we've had our meetings, I've got documentations that we've had these conversations with them. Unfortunately, a lot of these owners, they are owners and operators, so they have other hotels, so they're not in town. So this was the only one, unfortunately, that was in town, but we've invited all of them to be here. But, you know, it's just like pulling teeth trying to get this stuff, and it's frustrating to me as well as you, because that's the way I said it in the email. Please come, I need you to
And please pass that question back to them.
Anyone else?
When are we reviewing the hot funds?
What's that?
When are we reviewing hot tax? Isn't that coming up?
It'll be this summer, so we'll probably in the next couple of months have that meeting where you're reviewing the applications.
Again, my, my concern is tracking. You know, I, I want to see that this is helping the hotels, and the only way we're gonna find out is to see a percentage of increase into the revenue of a hotel over the, but they won't share that with us. They won't share how many rooms with us, they don't share it during events, they won't share it. So there's gotta be a way for us to say that they have done it. We just, and I'm sorry, I'm not a real trusting character to begin with, but, but, you know, when, when somebody says, oh, yeah, we're gonna get $33,000 into this budget, and we're, you know, we're gonna tell them, yeah, we, we did great the next year. We won't know that. So, so there has to be some, some transparency as to how, how we can track these numbers, because we do have to see that there is a benefit to the, to the hotels and not just they're saying, oh, yeah, we want it next year. So, so what is that? Before, before I'm, I'm, I feel that I can approve this or, or vote for it, I need to, I need to have some semblance of how we're going to do it and how we're going to track it. That's just me, you know, it's, it's a vote. But, but I really think that it's not a great number, honest, and, and we all know, and I'd like to throw it on the table as to where this money is going to come from in the future, because we all know that it's not, you know, we're not getting a whole lot of CBB support, support right now. And, and the support and the cost of CBB at this point is a lot more than this, than we're paying a lot more to CBB and getting zero for our dollars. I would rather spend it here.
Well, and that's what we're talking about. I didn't want to, there's, there's other avenues that we're looking at.
Well, but I think, I think we all need to know that, and it has to be out on the table before we approve this.
Okay. Well, that's why we're discussing it now, and that was some of my stuff that we were talking about with Amanda, that I just didn't want to quite disclose yet.
I, I know where you were coming from, but I, I want everybody to hear that there's, there's thoughts of it. I'm not saying we're doing it. I'm just saying, but there is thoughts of this, and, and I think before we go into this whole approval process, that, that has to come forward. And, and, you know, Council needs to decide, are we going to continue with CBB funding, or are we going to look at this replacing it to help our hotels? Because the dollar's gotta come from somewhere, and then we need to see that there is some type of, of logical means to track, to track the improvement of a hotel.
Well, and, and I know you say that, Mayor, and, and I know you weren't on the call with us, but you get in front of these hoteliers, they're going to discuss things that you better have answers for, because they're saying they pay this hot tax every year, they want to see where it's going. And I think you're exactly right. You know, they, they want to see this more than the other things that we do. Even, even a lot of the events, they threw us under the, what are you spending money for this? I want my money on this sign. I don't want my money to go to Seabrook Kills and Wheels, or, or whatever it may be.
Really?
So, absolutely, they were, they were talking about different things like that, not specifically Kills and Wheels, but other of the events that we are funding for. Not specifically Keels and Wheels, but other of the events that we are funding for. So, well, you weren't there, Mayor, so, I mean, I'm just trying to tell you, Gail was there. And they were throwing, we pay you so much percentage, we want that percentage to go to our signage. That's what they're saying. So hopefully, our next meeting that we can have, you can attend, so you can understand what we're up against here. And I'm trying to advocate and promote these hotels, just like any other business in the city. And if this is what they want, we need to support them, and that's what we pay, they pay hot tax for. And so if this is what they want, we give it to them. That's what they pay it for. So just like we did with the CBB. We're not tracking the CBB either. And we've been doing that for how many years?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I've been talking about getting out of CBB for the last 10 years now. But, you know, if the hotels are not transparent with us and who is going into the hotels during these events, which is impossible for the event promoters to track, then that's up to the hotel. And so I am in no means against this, but I want to see us make sure that we are going to do something for the hotels instead of just their griping.
And they got to show us what is coming, and I agree with you. So we just got to have that conversation with them and make sure that they...
On stuff like this, marketing this specifically, advertising, I caution all of us about trying to tie a specific ROI back to the dollar spent. I don't care how good you are at tracking data, you're never going to know where all of your customers come from. I spend an awful lot of time on it. And I'm about, every one of my customers gets asked the question twice. I have a 40% confidence, maybe 30%, as far as where they actually found me and what advertising dollars I'm spending are actually generating revenue. This is on the highway going by, and we're asking the hotel to take on the additional burden of tracking it and asking those questions. And even if they agree to do that, asking those questions is going to get a 20 to 35% accuracy on what they're doing. So is it an appropriate thing to do from a marketing advertising standpoint? I think so. I wish the hotels would at least represent themselves here. But if we tie this to tracking mechanisms, then we should just vote no now.
Okay. I mean, go ahead. Mark, you're up. One thing I think is very important is that the source of our hot tax is the hotels. And so if we, and it seems like what Tom said and others said about spending the money and where it's going to come from, maybe the first thing we need to do is find out where the money's going to come from, because then it may be far more palatable to say, you know, we're going to take it out of our left pocket and put it right back in our right pocket, as opposed to taking it out of the general fund. And then going forward, what can we expect from the hotels reporting back to us saying, is this working? Not necessarily for just renewal, but is there something else we could do with that hot tax that would help even more?
I agree. And that's what me and Gail spoke to them about. They've got to start standing up and coming and speaking to us about where they want some of this money spent and where they think, if they can help us track it and do more things, so.
Okay, so what do you want? We got a motion? No, we don't have a mo... Yeah, we got a motion in a second. What do we want to vote on here? I think it might be best if we could defer it till we get where the money's going to come from. And once we have that, then we can say, hey, this is where it's going to come from. And like I said, it could be far more palatable to vote for, or very painful to say no.
I'd like to make a motion. Table 5.3.
We need to have a vote on the motion. Before you take a vote, if I can, I just wanted to attach the forecast that we have on the revenue side for the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. So as you guys know, we have the hot that goes into a fund of itself, and that's the funds that is being proposed tonight on this item. So this would have nothing to do with general fund. The program, when we spoke, this is a third party that Tech dot hires to go out. They'll meet with the businesses and run that whole program. They cannot move into our area if there's one barrel still standing. So when we have the next crew come in and do the landscaping, most likely, they won't even be here until our next fiscal year. But right now, the attachment that you're looking at serves to let you know that we are doing well as far as the projected revenues. So even looking at your current fiscal year, aside from canceling any contracts or subscriptions, you're healthy in that hot fund to make a decision. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were looking at that additional attachment.
Okay, question. Who can't come with barrels up?
So the third party, it's the company that comes in and installs the blue panels.
Oh, okay. Is that why there are no signs on the Gulf Freeway?
Probably, yeah.
Well, let me ask you a question. Do we know how big this sign's going to be?
So there's different sizes. If you've noticed on the highways, there's some that just have lodging, and there's some that will have lodging, food, and gas. And so it really directly ties to when they go solicit our businesses in those three categories. If they get hits from instance food and gas, then they'll do a three tri-panel, as opposed to just a single lodging panel.
So if the gas stations want a sign, they go directly to Tech dot and not through us?
Well, that third party that they've contracted, yes. So they'll have a salesperson actually going out to those businesses. And if they want to sign a contract, then they would be signing a contract for a panel.
So for the last 20 years, we've tried to get rid of all the billboards in this town, and now we're going to start putting them back up?
Well, they're highway signs.
I mean, we got rid of all, every single billboard on 146th. And now we're going to start having signs back up on the highway. All right. Tom called for a table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of tabling?
Don't we have to go back to the first one?
No, not if it's tabled.
Let's just get it fixed.
Oh, okay. We'll do that at the end. Okay, 6.1. Do routine business. City manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, Port of Houston Railspur, City of Seabrook, CIP projects, economic development updates. In a city of Seabrook grants.
All right, Mayor and Council, no PowerPoint tonight, but I'll just kind of run through a few of the updates. Continue to update you guys on when we do publish notices. So Sean and community development have been very busy. We do have some upcoming projects that hopefully you've taken a peek at the public notices. Planning and zoning will be looking at a couple of items, one being a planned unit development for a warehouse on the north side, cold storage. And then you've got your final PUD that's coming up for the Quiet Warehouse project as well. So those two projects are coming up. We will have staff also going back on the Open Space and Trails Commission this week. They're finalizing the plans for the Corether's Grading and Drainage Project that will then come over to city council and then ultimately out to bid. The Port of Houston Railspur project is a bit on hold, but still active. So we're waiting on some additional signage for those connections across 146, and still probably targeted not till late of this year to probably go live. CIP projects will continue to take in on additional flows at the wastewater treatment plant. And we're fully in design with our architect for the EMS and EOC expansion. Met with them and have returned some documentation that we're looking at, as well as the fire training facility. So we've gotten some 3D mockups for the training facility and working with the architect, vendor, to get some final costs for foundation all the way up on that bond project as well. Economic updates, not a whole lot to report as far as new openings. We're working with the taco shop that opened up over here on 146. So as part of our goals with the Economic Development Corporation, we'll be churning out some press releases more frequently on our new businesses. So that one will be released later this week. Grant administration, we've got a number of generators I've mentioned to you, probably going on two years now. So internally, on those grant projects, there's been some activity. FEMA's, as we all know, has been a challenge to work with. We've got almost a million dollars wrapped up in the generators, and I was hoping by now we'd be able to report that grant project was wrapping up. But I think we have another round of meetings yet to go. So everything else is still moving along as far as our grant administration. I'll end there if there's any questions.
Questions?
Can you just give me an update on the sound study for breaded o' kakers? Did that, another...
So we did do the ambient, so this was going to be a two-step process. So there was an ambient sound reading that was done, and we've gotten the results of that with the idea of, once the Railspur goes live, is to go and do the second sound study so that we can compare and look at different elements over there.
Okay. And then also, you said the mini mural project was approved through EDC?
Yes.
What's the next steps of that?
So it was approved, and we'll need to look at it from staff perspective of how we turn out advertisements, that that's a live project, and see what kind of feedback we get. And then we'll look at the criteria for the eligibility of the artists that was brought forth last time, but then if we have a pool of artists, how we would select those.
Okay. What, and is there any update on the Seabrook Town Center or Margaritaville, like any?
As far as those projects, they are still both live. The Margaritaville project is still active. It's a bit in transition as far as what we understand from the primary project lead on that. The Edge at the Town Center behind CVS is absolutely active. So if you've noticed this week on the drive cuts, Tech dot's installed those drive cuts that match the overall plan for that site. So the plans are with Sean and Nick, and they are all, but almost complete. So it's in the hands of the developer when they start scraping the dirt, but it's ready to go.
Anybody else?
Just a quick question, and then I can talk to you after. I could talk to you after, but I noticed a couple of signage on the Frontage Road going northbound and turning on, did you, have you seen that?
Go ahead, let me see if it's the same.
Well, the turning arrow has both lanes turning this way.
Oh, okay.
So if you're going straight, somebody's going to T-bone right there, because the signs, there's two signs there, they're deceiving.
Is it at NASA?
No.
Repstor?
Repstor.
Okay.
Yeah. And so it's very deceiving. I was doing it the other day, and I was like, oh, my God, anybody could turn here. And the second sign, it makes it even more sense that if that happens, we're going to have an issue.
Okay.
So they either got to make that one left lane turning only, and vice versa. So I could show you after.
Okay.
But it's an issue already right there.
Okay. And I'll just add a little bit. You triggered something else that really wasn't on my agenda, but economic development related. Our signage, we've gotten a couple of comments from you as far as some correction on signage with the transportation project. So just, everybody's aware, the mayor had mentioned that we did go to Tech dot, because we've got the signage that's saying NASA, but not Seabrook as you're going back towards the southbound side. That, we've seen the fabrication, but they were supposed to, I think, have it up by now, but it's not. But we have seen the drawing, so that is going to be corrected. We were aware, and I put a request back into Tech dot this week. I had a couple of questions on here at Main Street. We've changed Main Street naming, and we've got both on the Frontage Roads still indicating Second Street. So they've requested our ordinance and other documentation this week. So if you get any questions, those signs are in the queue with Tech dot to be updated and changed out.
Anybody else? Okay, I forgot. Item 1.1. Mayor, city council, and our members of city staff may make announcements about city community events.
Why didn't you say something?
Well, it's hardly a critical item in the agenda, but next time I will.
It's the first item in the agenda.
Next time I will. All right. Events upcoming here in the city of Seabrook. There's movie night at Mater Park, The Secret Life of Pets. Surprisingly, I've never seen that one. That's Saturday, June 15th at 7:00 PM. Oh, at 7:00 PM, there's the animal control program. And at 8:00 PM, the movie starts. So animal control will be out there talking about The Secret Life of Pets, and then the movie starts at 8:00.
What's your movie?
I think the movie is The Secret Life of Pets as well. Texas Outlaw Challenge on Thursday, June 20th through Sunday, June 23rd. Big Boat Go Fast. Fourth of July Kids Parade, Thursday, July 4th, 10 to 12 at Mater Park. That's always a lot of fun. Come out and see it. Is there anything else?
Anybody? Okay, thanks, Rob. Okay, 6.2. Established future meeting dates and agenda items.
Okay, Mayor and Council, the next regular city council meeting is going to be held on June 18th at 6:00 PM. And there's also going to be a special city council meeting on June 11th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, item 7.0, executive session. 7.1, section 2551.074, conduct a closed executive session to deliberate the evaluation and duties of the city manager.
Okay, we have returned from special session. No action was taken. It is 7:37. Do I have a...
Look to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned 7:37.